All right, we pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great law of the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, I just wanted to remind that we're celebrating a very happy occasion, Dr. Patalino's 7th anniversary with the district, and there are a lot of things to celebrate. So, absolutely on to executive session, I'm going to ask that you go out, we'll present, we'll make our presentation, you go out and get your cake, and come back in, and join the conversation in here with your cake, because I've left it out there for the public, we've been doing that for several years now, so, okay? Wonderful. So, entertain a motion.
The motion.
All those in favor? I'm trying to adjourn to executive session for a purpose, I'm waiting to do a very collective bargaining. Pardon, pardon. Under the Taylor Law, KTFESP, CSEA, and ASCAP, matters relating to employment of particular individuals or individuals in employment history of particular individual, individuals, or corporations.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we will return as close to seven as we possibly can. In the meantime, I'm going to call the public session to order, and I would actually like to ask people to stand. I wanted to offer a moment of silence for John Bailey, longtime teacher and administrator in Kingston District, at the University of Penn State. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you very much. Okay, we've reached the portion of meeting where we welcome public comment, however, Dr. Patalino has a statement we would like to read before we begin public comment, and I would like to announce, if you didn't read it already, that it is Dr. Patalino's 7th anniversary with Kingston City School District, and anybody who knows him knows I'm celebrating this celebration. So, you have cake in the hall, and you're welcome to get up and go help yourself, please, they don't want to take it home. I know you have a resolution, don't worry, we don't have leftovers home. So, help yourself, and help us celebrate. So, with that, I'll turn to you.
As many of you already know, Wednesday, December 19th, it was reported to the Miller Middle School Administration that a student was in possession of a BB gun. Within minutes, the building administration removed the student from the student population, and were able to confiscate this BB gun. During their subsequent investigation, they learned that the student had threatened another student and possibly discharged the BB gun in one of the boys' bathrooms previous day. Mr. Sheever, Mr. Reed, and our school resource officer handled this event appropriately, and the parents of the students who were involved were informed immediately. Due to the student privacy laws, I know many people want to know what's going on as far as the consequences, but due to student privacy laws, I'm unable to give specific details about the exact nature of the discipline consequences, but the student in question has been suspended, and we have, and will continue, to follow the Kingston City School District Code of Conduct, the law, and State Education Department regulations regarding discipline. In reviewing this event, it was clear that we did not effectively and promptly communicate this to the entire school population. We are changing our practices, and we'll be more proactive and effective about this communication situation such as this as we move forward. Parents are our partners in all that we do. At the end of the day, I am responsible for ensuring proper communication, and this failure will not be repeated. We are now focusing on looking to improve our prevention measures and to avoid these circumstances in the future. As of today, there's three things that we've started doing. Number one, in the area of communication, I've directed our Human Resources Department to post for substitute communication specialists to fill a position that has been vacant since July due to a maternity leave. I've also directed our coordinator of safety, Mr. Parker, who is here with us, to do some research on the most up-to-date and most effective enhanced safety measures in our school buildings, including an up-to metal detectors. And today, we went live with an anonymous tip system to allow students to give us information free from fear of retaliation, encouraging our students that if they see something, to say something. Safety is and must be our first concern. Our building and safety plans are current, practiced, and approved by the State Education Department. We are committed to our school resource officer program, and our relationship with our local law enforcement remains very strong. We have made several improvements in our safety capacity over the last several years, including a few added cameras and staff at the middle schools, and the new, more secure entrances at Kingston High School. We will continue to make the improvements and adjustments as we move forward to make sure that our students, and our faculty, staff, and community are safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. And before we begin public comment, I would like to remind you of the parameters. The policy is posted on the podium. We do not discuss individual personnel, nor do we discuss student discipline issues, and only issues in general. So, you're limited to two minutes. Our board clerk will notify you when you're approaching the two minutes. If you have something in writing you want to leave, she'll make sure that's disseminated to all members of the board. So, I have three people signed up, and if there's anyone after these three who would like to address the board, you're perfectly welcome to do so. Okay, first one signed up is Zoe Dunn.
Hi, good evening. I'm Zoe Dunn. I am the mom of a first grader at George Washington Montessori, and I actually came to the board tonight not with anything prepared, but specifically with gratitude. I wanted to personally thank the entire school board, and Dr. Patalino specifically, for instituting the early preschool development program at George Washington for the three-year-olds. We are really excited in the community, I can speak for the PTO, that it's something that we really cherish the opportunity to have. And we were delighted that the board took that consideration, that took the community's needs into consideration, and was able to find a way to bring that program to us. So, I'm really just here to say thank you. I know that there's some other things that GW would like to work on together with Dr. Patalino in the future, and we're also very thankful that you're coming with us, with the school board and the community, in early February to talk about then for vows of replacement. So, really, all I have to offer tonight is gratitude. Thank you.
Next up is Tori Lau.
It's been a while since I've seen everybody. I came tonight to speak on behalf of parents with regards to the incident, and if you'd asked me about two weeks ago, I probably would have been coming in with a very different frame of what I wanted to say and what I'm about to say. I did attend the meeting Monday night over at Miller, and I was very happy with how that meeting went. We met with the principal and vice principal. Priscilla was there, Dr. Patalino was there, and I was very impressed with the response and the genuine compassion and understanding that was afforded to the parents that were upset. You know, I tried to stay focused on and encouraged some of the parents to stay focused on the fact that, you know, we can't prevent incidents from happening, there's no foolproof way unfortunately to do that. You know, the main concern was the communication issue afterwards, and the lack of it, and the fact that in an effort to prevent mass panic, the silence is what created the mass panic, because then it was a lot of, you know, Facebook conversations, and, you know, the beginning of rumors, and the increase of what may have happened versus what happened, and, you know, who knew, it was the day before a 10-day vacation. So, it was very alarming, it was very distressing. I am happy with the way that the meeting was held Monday night at Miller. I was really excited to get the alerts today about the application for the students to say something. I'm really trying to encourage parents to talk with their students, and, you know, get out of that mindset of stitches get stitches. It's old, it doesn't have any place in our society today. You know, I'm concerned that things were happening over the course of two days, and students weren't saying anything right away. I was very appreciative and understanding with the timeframes that were allowed to be given, with how quickly things were taken care of once it was reported. It was a lot of reassurance, but again, it went towards the communication aspect of just getting that knowledge and understanding. I'm really looking forward to moving forward with that increased communication between the district and the parents and its goal base. So, thank you. I'm feeling much more relieved about it, much more positive about it. I think we still have a ways to go, but I really do appreciate all of the outreach back, the responses from the board members and from the school district. Thank you.
Ron Carvis. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ron Carvis, have two daughters, in Miller. That is my topic for this evening. I've been a police officer for nearly 25 years. I found the events prior to the school break distressing, to say the least. It was primarily the lack of communication. I commend the fact that you had the actor detained, as you said, in a matter of minutes. However, what was the guarantee that, as happens frequently, he wasn't acting, or she wasn't acting, acting in concert with someone else? Why was the school not placed in lockdown immediately? That I find very distressing. Mr. Palladino, Dr. Palladino, I do appreciate your comments this evening. That is comforting, it's reassuring, that it is now being addressed, and I would like to thank you for taking care of that and having that addressed. City of Albany School District recently went through an incident just prior to break. The next day, they had alarms on all of their doors because they had a subject bring a BB gun, which can cause serious physical injury. Into the school, they alarmed all the entrance and exit doors because that subject had been let in through a door that was unsecured, and they did not know that. They also recalibrated all their metal detectors. I think that we could follow in their footsteps, use that as an example, and perhaps get in contact with them and find out how they handle things. And again, my, I echo my family and others that we're familiar with, the biggest concern was the defined lack of communication. We were looking for answers, we were looking for information, and we were met with silence. And again, that's what generates the rumor mill, that's how bad information gets started, that's how, for lack of another term, a panic ensues. It's far easier, in my opinion, to give information ahead of time and say, this is what we have available, we will have more information forthcoming. And again, I do greatly appreciate the new information you gave us this evening regarding the new communications policies. I did attend the school, the meeting with the state administrators yesterday, and that was fantastic. I had a very... That was very beneficial, thank you. I met with some of the members of the school board yesterday, and that was fantastic. I greatly appreciate the opportunity. Ladies and gentlemen, have a safe evening, have a great trip home.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carvis. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the board at this point? Anybody else? Okay. All right, thank you very much. And the next up, approval of minutes for November 28th, are the motion.
Seven.
Okay, discussion, any amendments, corrections? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of November 28th, signify as aye. Next up, minutes of December 12th, entertain a motion.
Seven.
Thank you. Discussion, any amendments, corrections, and then? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting minutes of December 12th, signify as aye. Close. That brings us back to superintendent and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
You're very welcome.
First, for the superintendent's report, we have Mr. Parker, our director of buildings and grounds, who is here to give us some Maha update. Thank you, dear.
There he is. Zipping cake.
I was eating delicious cake. Congratulations on 7th month. So, Maha's moving along quite well.
Excuse me, could you just move that bag? Because it's sleeping on the screen. Sorry. That's okay. I have room here.
So, Maha's moving along very well. We... Our guys are there, we're painting the cafeteria and everything. Oh, long story short, the elevator tower is completely constructed, they're putting the brick on the outside, I've got a couple of pictures of that, guys putting up bricks. The inside of the tower, yay, there it is. Somehow, and by the way, my camera broke today, so I took all these on my phone, and when we expanded to the full screen, you only get half the picture, so, I'm not a communication person. So, that's the tower and the brick, that's the inside of the, where they're just tapping off the finishing brick on the tower. This is a area where we had put a lintel in to support the second floor, and this area is a office space on the first floor. That whole wall that that guy, that person's working on will be removed. It's down toward the east end of the building. We are sheet rocking and taping, so the second floor is about 30, 40% sheet rock and taped. All the door jams are set, electric is done. Again, picture kind of extended on me. That's all the IT cables going back to the IT closet. They've all been run, the electric has all been run back to central location. This is Wes Bassett, he's one of our folks down at the warehouse, he's painting the gym, that's our section, we have the kitchen all painted, the ceiling's been replaced, lighting's been replaced. Gym is, that will be, was painted completely today, the storage areas are completely painted, and we're going to move into the classrooms and start doing floorwork in there. We concentrated on this area because the construction guys aren't in there, and now the construction guys are at where the classrooms are, they've put in, that's another guy, that's Todd Rixon, didn't want his face on the picture, but he's put a ceiling tile in. This is in one of the classrooms, they had to expand the size of the ABA bathrooms. When they originally did them, the code now is a little bit bigger. So, while we're in that section, construction guys are in the classroom, they're getting done, and we're going to move in right behind them. That's the inside of that bathroom. And just elsewhere in the district, we have an LED lighting project going on at Miller, which is about 50% complete, we've done all the hallways, we're converting all our T8s and T50s to LED on a grant from, oh, it's not a grant, it's a matching fund from Central Hudson. We're replacing the sinks at Miller, a lot of the sinks, this is all, all of these items kind of come from the board walkthrough. We walk through, they have major concerns, and we start repairing those right away, things that we can do in-house that are not, not in need of a capital project. We've had some pipe leaks this winter, just continuing in JFK and GW. Myers, we replaced the heating unit in the nurse's office, and we've done a lot of repair on heat. Good news this year, and I probably shouldn't say it, with the cold weather coming, our boiler's been running really well, and we haven't had a lot of problems with our heat this year. We're prepping to keep pre-cable room in Edson, I think that's starting on the 22nd, and we are ready. The heat's working, the floor's been cleaned, everything's ready there. Removing stuff from this building, we've already taken two truckloads of IT equipment out, and we're starting next week to take out file cabinets that aren't necessary and bring them over to the storage areas we just set up, and we're addressing the issues from the board. From the board, okay? And that's it. Little bit. We're just now...
Wonderful, don't you think?
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Parker?
Yes, I just have a quick question, it wasn't in your presentation, but it's something we talked about in the past, about the pool and kind of management of the pool, and I'm just wondering how that's going and if that's been improved.
Right, so, the Dectron unit, which controls all the humidity and all that, we've had some issues with the controls on it. We've got it regulated, the pool itself, the chemical feed pumps and all that have been replaced and or rebuilt. We've been keeping a close eye on it. Right now, we're better than we've been in a long time. We still have one little issue with that Dectron unit, and we're trying, there's two compressors in it to remove humidity, and one compressor's down, but we're working on that. As far as all the, there's some issues in the locker rooms, we're working on that, that's through the contract with Optimus, and we'll be wrapping those up shortly. There's only, there's only one item outstanding, and that's the flooring in the locker rooms. We're going to have to, it's about a four-week process, so we're probably going to have to get that in some time.
And some of the issue with the floor was around timing, I remember, and you had talked about instituting a new schedule, that was all...
Right, and we have done that, we've been, we're, as I'm talking, I'm trying to remember the director's name, I can't figure her name, Kate Burns.
Kate Burns.
Kate Burns, thank you. We've worked, worked out through with her, and she's actually testing in the morning for us, and then we come in later in the day and we do some testing. So, there is a better protocol, the record-keeping is up to date now and everything, it's in a much better place. Let's put it that way.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Okay, just a really quick update on our Guardians of Equity work. I know that there's some information that we're likely to know where we are and where we're going, just going to, this is, just a quick update, again, reminder, Guardians of Equity is our work together with the Technical Assistance on Disproportionality team out of NYU. We have a team, a group of about 45 district employees, community members, parents, board members who participate in this, and working on addressing our disproportionality issues around suspension of our black students. So, we're in year three of this grant, and one of the things I'd like to point out frequently is, we invited NYU to come here and help us. This isn't some state mandated thing, they're not being forced upon us. We would be forced to make a plan, but we would not be forced to be as intense as we are with this program with NYU, and I know I have several board members who are on that, and I think intense is the correct word of this training, for what we've been going through. So, we're in year three, this is where we become the Guardians of Equity, and I blame Mr. Verge for that name, I mean, I give him Mr. Verge credit for making that name, but the objective really this year is implementation of our cultural responsive education from year two, the things that we put together there, so we want to use our data to really be able to implement that. Our first session is in October, and what we did was we created the district-wide behavioral data workbook. So, we're working not from theory, not from conversation, but actual data that we've collected, and this we put together with the help of NYU and Mr. Tomsecker, who actually is part of this group now also. So, we're looking at possible solutions and long-term root causes of the disproportionality. Our next session was in November, and again, this was continuing this work, but instead of looking at the district-wide data, they drilled down, looking at the school-level behavioral data, so they created school-level behavioral data workbooks. Now, we see where we are district-wide as far as our suspensions and our behavioral issues, and now we see it needs building where we are, and our next step is to kind of take that data, really, and shift it from last year's data, which is what works, into this year's data. So, we're working in real time, which is not something that we do a lot with that, as you know, when we work with state reports or state tests, they're usually a year out. So, we're trying to jump ahead, really work with live data right now, so we can change it right now, when we see things going the way we don't want them to go, or put something in place. So, our next session will be January 17th, and the team will be, has to begin pulling together referral and suspension data from each school so far, and then we'll start using that data in the next remaining sessions to create, really, strategies to address what we see. And that's where we are with the Guardians of Equity team as of now, our next, is it next, is next week? Yes?
I know that some high schools have been doing some really good work around this, they have a book study, and they have a professional environment, I'm wondering if you can have some kind of a report about that. I'm just interested in how teachers and how people in that school feel that kind of that work is going, because it is intense, and rolling that out is kind of disheartening, so I'm just wondering, I would like to hear how that's going.
Okay. Mr. Verge, on this?
Just to speak to that, not specific to the high school, when we started this work three years ago, one of the first things we did with NYU, with them, they did with us, is to conduct a staff beliefs survey on, around this topic, and now we re-administered that survey just this past fall to, again, all staff. So, our third session next week will also be including that in our data review work, believe from when we started almost three years ago, or two and a half years ago, to now, so, district-wide, so just wanted to make sure that was shared.
Thank you, Ms. Verge. And next, on the super, oh, are there any other questions? The next meeting is next Thursday, is it?
Yes.
Seventeenth. And next, just a brief update on the search for the new Montessori principal, which I know is a concern of the board, a concern of the GW community, and as you know, Ms. Hannam's, Ms. Hannam's retirement is on this agenda. One of the positives here is Ms. Hannam will not be retiring until August, so we will have, you know, access to her historical knowledge as we transition into having a new principal take over there. I am going over to, as Ms. Dunn stated, she's still my founder, that we are going to, maybe go over on February 5th and meet with the GW community, along with Dr. Falcow, and want to talk to the parents there and get some ideas, who are we looking for, what are the characteristics we're looking for, what is, you know, kind of, what does that person look like in their eyes, so we can, during our search, really use that as a way to narrow down our candidates and get the right person for the students and the community over at GW. I know a lot of talk about, that people are talking a lot about, you know, we want them to be a Montessori person, and absolutely, that's going to be our first priority, is that they're going to be a Montessori person, or someone who is able to, you know, really get up to speed on Montessori and has a true belief. Hard to do, hard to find, you know, it's not, a lot of Montessori, there are only like six public Montessori schools in the state of New York, so we're not stealing anyone else's, most likely, maybe, maybe we will, I don't know, but we're going to, we're going to work toward it. We're going to advertise Metalland OLS, which we do with everything, we're going to reach out to the administrators' union and advertise with them, we're going to advertise with the New York State Council for Superior Tennis, which is one of the places where people look. We're also going to look into advertisements in Edweek, which is the national education paper for education. So, we're going to, you know, reach out and see what we can, see if we can get the candidates a lot. We'll be posting probably February 6th, after we meet with the parents at GW, so we have that in mind when creating our expectations in the posting and applications and those kinds of things. I actually, I should, I received an email this morning from someone who's, and I didn't, I was going to print it and bring it with me, and now I didn't, offering some training opportunity around, around Montessori, I'll revisit that and I'll update you on that, and actually respond to that.
Don't you suppose?
Sorry.
Sorry, I have some questions. So, I know we have to obviously hire someone who's certified, New York State administrator, and that there aren't a lot of people who have that certification, and also a Montessori certification, but I'm wondering if we couldn't also advertise in the Montessori networks also, or just kind of, I mean, we have to be open about the, obviously, the certification requirements, but that might be another source to when you can find somebody.
And I think Ms. Hannam would be a good source for me to...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's like a young, excited, happy, energetic, Montessori person out there who wants to do it, run a public Montessori in the city of New York. Mr. Michael?
All right, like I say, now our search would be luxury, if we get to have a bilingual , fancy more, that would be nice.
And given the population that we have, our Latino population in GW, would be very nice to have a bilingual administrator, it's one of the things that we try to get in every single hire that we're getting these days, you know, teacher or administrator is finding people who are bilingual, not, again, now we're looking for a New York State certified, Montessori certified, bilingual, it could happen, I'm just saying.
It's going to be very rare, you'd be adding to that.
No, you don't know if you don't have, that's true.
Any other questions? And that ends, wait, thank you very much. Which brings us back to the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions any trustee would like to pull from the consent agenda?
P59.
P59. Thank you. Any others?
P fifty-nine.
P fifty-nine. Thank you. Any others? We hear no others. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus P fifty-nine. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda minus P fifty-nine? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. P fifty-nine, enter your motion. Thank you. Discussion?
There's just one, but I'd like to hold the other ones to go, rather than have a deal. So, how do I, I pull one and not?
Well, you could say you used to have, you know, a concern about one, and you can, and, you can, well, just a question.
Yeah. I have a concern about one, the reassignment of instructional support serves as position of transitional, transitional for the year.
Okay. And all the rest are fine?
And all the rest are fine.
Any other discussion?
So, we're pulling that, this is gonna be, the next vote will be.
I don't, I don't.
I think that's the way you do it.
Pull, just pull that one.
And vote separately on it, I believe, right?
Can you move P fifty-nine minus that, please?
Yeah, okay. I'd like to move P fifty-nine minus that reassignment. Any motion? Yeah, second. All right. So, is there any discussion of P fifty-nine minus that, one reassignment? All right, then, P fifty-nine minus the reassignment, please signify by saying aye if you're all for it. Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
Two P fifty-nine.
Okay, sorry. I'm seeing you're doing this, though.
No, I'm doing P fifty-nine minus.
Minus it, okay, go ahead.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, now, we're moving just the reassignment.
Summer.
Thank you.
Abstentions.
All right, any more discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor of the reassignment added stated there, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions.
Aye.
Okay? You've seen, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we have donation. Uh, three age. May I have a volunteer read the donation?
I will.
Mrs. Jordan, thank you.
We are very grateful for Meyer Elementary School receiving a generous donation of storage shed, and that is, I'm sure, very, very much appreciated, since storage is such an issue. I'm not familiar with ETA. And there's also a generous grant award for the Epsom Elementary School from the Connect Kids Field Trip Refund Grant Program in the amount of $1,000. Thank you very much for that.
And that concludes the discussion.
And thank you very much for reading that, bless them, a very grateful, which we listed Board of Education.
So, we have, which one?
No, this is the consent agenda.
Yeah, no, this right here, right? Policy committee. So, policy committee, and the report will be given, oh, the report will be given by, our, our training, chair on training, or?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I'll give you a, okay.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to give it?
Board of Education. The Board of Education first, you have to pass that.
I'm sorry.
That was part of the consent.
That was part of the consent agenda.
That was just lowered down in the, in the agenda.
We're on the, we're on the committee reports.
It was a little confusing.
It is, it is.
Okay, so I'll go.
Yes, please.
Policy committee met last Friday, moving along the work that we have in progress. We have two policies with minor changes that are embedded by the people you know. First one is the sexual harassment policy, zero-one-one-zero, and then six-eight-four-zero meal services, minor changes. So, I'd like to move those to be adopted this evening.
A second.
And then, we have first readings with, once again, minor, I'm sorry, I'm rushing it.
Okay, any discussion about the zero-one-one-zero, either the policy or the regulations? All right, all those in favor?
Aye, thank you.
And this one?
Okay, so, um.
Okay, I'm sorry, and six-eight-four-zero. I'm sorry, what did you get? That's my fault. I'm putting my, winding my guidebook, those tread levels are.
We have to go on that one as well?
No, it was part of the whole.
It was part of the whole thing, okay? All those in favor? Please signify by saying aye. And opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, finish your vote, I'm sorry.
Any abstentions? Go ahead.
I did want to mention about the meal services. We're having an issue that came up in the policy committee, which are people reimbursing for meals served to children. And, you know, we have a wonderful policy where there's no meal shaming, and we don't want that, and we're, kids are entitled to have a full lunch, just like their peers. But what we're finding is that there is a growing problem of parents not paying the bills when they are not on free and reduced lunch. And when that happens, that, that then has to be absorbed somewhere. And so, it seems to be a growing policy around the state. It's not just Kingston, but, you know, it, there was an article, who pays for unpaid meals, and we, what I would like to do is encourage anyone who's watching this, or people who go back and speak to their neighbors, to encourage people who are eligible for free and reduced lunch to please fill out the paperwork, so that the school can be reimbursed for those lunches. Because if the pay, even if you qualify, if you haven't applied for it, then the school system is left unplugged for that. And I believe we've doubled, is that correct? Tripled, excuse me, we have tripled the debt for the same time period last year. And so, it is significant. And we, we had a situation, I know, a few years ago, where the community was kind enough to pay down debt, but these are not for people who can't afford it. These are people who are just not reimbursing, or if they can't afford it, we would just ask them to please fill out the paperwork. So, I think there is gonna be an escalated effort to bill people with something that looks like a bill, and also to make another effort to spread the word about free and reduced lunch.
So, this would only, this only applies to three elementary schools, but we don't have on.
So, with, so with two middle schools doing all free, we still have three, tripled the debt of unpaid lunch debt that we had last year, with those schools not being free. So, we're tripled with fewer students by a significant number.
I think most of it is at, at high school.
I think that is true. The majority of the, of the unpaid lunches is high school.
And a lot of those kids may in fact be eligible for free and reduced lunch, but again, if they don't fill out the paperwork, then, so I, I just thought it was worthwhile bringing up that.
And we're doing a valuation, doing a budgeting process for the other three elementary schools, as to how close they are to eligibility?
Yeah, I think, and, and, I don't know, we need to keep that, keep it running, you know?
And Mrs. Collins, there's still.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Collins.
Thank you.
So, the, we have two policies for first readings tonight. They're existing policies, but with minor changes, once again, recommended to us. The first one is alcohol and drug testing of drivers, just minor changes regarding wording that really doesn't affect our existing policy and what we do. And the second policy is changes to the code of conduct, which they're gonna have up here. And it was changing a level, well, first of all, it added e-cigarettes and vaporizers to smoking, because, you know, those are becoming sadly more popular, nicotine delivery devices. So, that's a level two. And also, there was a change to the behavior that's listed as forcing someone to commit a dangerous or demeaning act, bordering on hazing. And that, you know, we, obviously, is an important consideration, important behavior to stop. So, that was moved up to level three to dovetail with the Jefferson Code, correct? So, those changes were made or suggested our last policy committee, and they are just on here for first reading, so any feedback, you know, can come back to us.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Collins. I would say Mrs. Collins also forwarded the wellness policy.
Yes.
To our life director for consideration, and I gave an email, so. Mrs. Jordan, twenty-four, and the ten minutes left.
Because that, that is we will be next tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, there are no other committee reports, so that brings us to old business, for the boards during old business. Any trustee would like to raise at this time? Any old business? Okay, I'll move along to new business, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to, oh, I'm sorry, did you have old business? I didn't see your, as a new business, can we do this one first?
Sure. I received the day. Dear Dr. Padalino, members of the administration and board trustees, after what has been some of the most difficult months of my life following my motor vehicle accident this past October, I am regrettedly submitting my formal resignation from the board effective after tonight's meeting. My accident has left me with neck and head injuries that have prevented me from participating in all aspects of life since the accident, including attending work, being able to sit upright for long periods of time, or until recently, even to drive. Life as I know it has been irrevocably changed. Thank you to everyone for the learning experiences over the past four-plus years. I ran for the board because I believed in the Kingston City School District community and administration, and I look forward to continuing to be an advocate from the sidelines. Danielle Guido.
Thank you very much. So, we're told by our attorney, we, we do not have the resolutions for this, for the letter of resignation, which was attached to this communication to Mr. Perna, would be unfiled, should anybody request it, any of our constituents or us. So, yes?
I would just like to thank Ms. Guido for her service, and I know that she was very passionate about her community, and remains passionate about her community, and wanted to serve, and I think she was a great role model for young people coming forward and serving on boards like this, so I hope that someday they achieve that. But in the meantime, I hope there's some young people out there that may pick up the pen.
Yes.
I would just, I would just, I know that, and I wish this can go well. I'm sorry that she suffered, which she's suffered in the last two months, and I'm glad that she's taken the time to recover, as she needs to recover. And now, we'll have decisions to make about whether we, how we, before.
Mr. Shonis.
We don't, we don't have to make a, we don't have to approve the resignation, because that's entirely dependent on the person who's resigning, but we could consider a motion, and I'll make a motion that the board convey a thank you to Ms. Guido for her service on the board, and wish her well in the future.
For every chance, second of it. All those in favor? I'm not gonna ask if anybody's opposed to anything. I too would like to wish her a speedy recovery, and I hope that one day she can run again for the board. And maybe sneak preview, she'd like to encourage young people in the community to run for the Board of Education, because that public education is, is very, very important in a community. So, I wish her all the best, and it's what heavy heart we accept, the resignation. Which leaves us with a decision, it's something that the board needs to think about. We have three options. We can leave the post vacant until the next election, we can hold a special election, and there's costs associated with that, or we can appoint somebody from the community. So, I want you all to think about that, and make a decision at the next meeting. Yes?
Sure, if we appoint someone from the community now, do they have to run again with that?
They do. They only fill out, until the next election, right. Now, at the next election, then, because we were down a member, the fourth vote getter would fill out her expired term.
Right, and so it only then be a two-year term, because they would fill out for the right?
Plus this little bit.
So, the person that is appointed by the board isn't necessarily the person that will fill out her term after the next election?
Correct.
The low vote getter out for.
We had, we had a discussion before where the low vote getter was incumbent, and that incumbent had to resign, and then take, and that was when we, when we don't came out.
Maybe it'll be similar, yes.
It gets complicated.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other new business? Yes?
I just wanted to kind of bring up the conversation again, that you brought to us about what happened at Miller. I really appreciate the administration's response. I think that, it sounds like the meeting that happened on that Monday night with the Miller community, and I'm sorry, I can't think of their, was productive and important. And I appreciate that our administration at that time has followed the protocol, so I think we did exactly what they were supposed to do. And sometimes, you know, things change, and now we need to review the protocol, and think a little bit differently about it. Particularly our communication with the local community, how we communicate to the community when incidents happen, you know, which is complicated. So, I appreciate that we're talking about that. It sounds like that was a good meeting, and I, and I appreciate it to the community for coming forward and, and speaking up about something that was a problem, because this is a partnership, and it has to look like that.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Oh, Mr. Shonis.
Well, I have two items that have to do with communication. One of this, so, in response to your email about the see something, say something, so I downloaded the KCSD app on my phone, and, so that's one of these that I've been playing on my phone. So, if I, so when I started, I had to do, go through several options, and I did. And now, this is what comes up on the front page, you know, all of these, I don't know if anyone can see them, but there's just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight announcements. And I don't know how you would find, how a student would find, see something, say something. So, I'm just wondering if we can have a separate app that would just be see something, say something?
When I, when I had it tested this morning, it didn't work like that. That's not what happens, and that's scary, by the way. And, and also, you can, you can enter, you can, also, outside of the app, you can have to write from your computer, write from our website, click, just click on, on the website without downloading the app, just go to our website, hit, so, we've also even made it so the students that have Chromebooks in their classrooms, if they're using their Chromebooks, they can get onto it and do this. So, if they see something in their class, they can do something right then and there. So, it's, or, or from the hall, and they get in, they have Chromebooks, they can do something there and then.
Is it the eyewitness, New York?
Eyewitness, New York.
Yes, I noticed there's other choices, like they can report something.
In the corner of our homepage. I would be more likely to do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check with Mr. Tonsack.
In any case, I think, you know, most students have, have smartphones now.
Yeah.
And so, doing it from there is, would probably be the prevalent way that a student would.
Well, they can't get, can't they get to the homepage of the Kingston City Schools on their phone?
They cannot, they're followed.
I know, I mean, it's not, you know, something like this, you wanna make it.
Probably not, but you could.
Okay. Did you have other new business, Mr. Shonis?
Yeah, I Yeah, I tried to go to a particular, I went to one, I won't mention which one it is, I went to a school homepage from the schools, I was trying to find a list of the administrators at that school, I couldn't find it on that anywhere, I spent 10 minutes searching for it, and I just couldn't find it. And I went to some other schools, and there was, they, several of them had About Us, and when you click on About Us, you got a list of the administrators. So I just think there should be some standardization, I mean, of that type of information on every school page, so that you don't have to search for it. I mean, I know we want to keep the ability for each school to express its own individuality, but there's some information that should be standard and standard location for each school, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Jordan?
I did contact our new federal congressional representative, General Valvado, this week, and spoke to a very nice young man, I imagine, young, because everybody sounds young to me, and I asked if we could have a meeting. There won't be a Kingston office for a little while. So I did, he told me to go to their contact information, which I did, and I requested a meeting for, and I said any time in February, I haven't heard back, but when I do, if I get a couple of dates, I did say that they could meet here, their board, since they don't have the Kingston office yet. But I was wondering if you are interested, I mean, I would meet with him myself, but I know that when we had the meeting with our former representative, I felt it was very helpful.
It was. Would you bring the rest of the Legislative Action Committee in?
Yes. So I would just invite whatever board members vote to, and I'll let you know as soon as I know.
And, and he will be here on the twenty-fourth, many of your, your members, and he'll be here on the twenty-fourth, he'll be speaking that day.
But he'll be speaking to the community, and I think that we have certain public education issues that we.
She announced the date, you just go open that office, so it's on that weekend.
Yeah, the gentleman I spoke to wasn't sure when it would be.
It's this weekend. It's opening on January.
Oh, is it? Oh, great.
When is that?
January thirteenth.
Mrs. Jordan, on, on subject of legislative action, did you want to mention the guides that Ms. got?
I sent them to everybody. I sent everybody a link so that you didn't have to go through the whole mess.
Thank you.
So then if you want to review the legislative, the legislative priorities for twenty nineteen.
Before lobby day, right.
Before the lobby day. It's easy to just.
And I'll just, just to add to that, Julian Marlet came to the St. Anne's School Board Association meeting, and she was great.
She was, yes, she was.
And there are so many comprehensive minutes of that meeting, if I do say so myself, and so you should actually go and look at them, because it was very, it was great conversation.
And I actually did the webinar that she did, and it was the same program that she had offered us in Boise, so.
Thank you.
She gave us a good.
All right, any other new business? I think it brings us to board member announcements. Any board member announcements? All right, I have a couple. Board of Education will be meeting at Mount Academy on Monday evening, January fourteenth, four o'clock in conversation, at six p.m. And it's customarily held in the main building upstairs, they can vent to an event there on the second floor at the end, they have a large community there.
They'll take you there.
They'll take you there, go through each of the doors. So that's next Monday at six p.m. Several of our trustees will be present, superintendent as well. Another announcement, we were recipients of a gift of a book on life and death at Kingston Post Office by Stephen Blowey and Karen Verlitz, and there is a section on Kingston High School and the new and the old, so you might want to take a look at it. And I'll, I'll start it down, if Mr. Michael can pass it around, I'll leave it open on the table if the public wants to look at it. And once again to the public, I have foil in my bag here, please take it home. I don't want to bring it home. So, but it's bookmarked, so you can take a look at it, everybody's welcome. The other announcement I have is, as per our practice, we'll be having a board relationships retreat next Wednesday evening, and I know there was some trouble about having at, Mrs. Jordan is going to host it, but she's flying the next morning, I don't think it's fair to her to have to clean up after all this day evening. So, it will be here, hot lock, all right? What's your pleasure, do we have to start at five thirty or six? It's up to you. Some of you I know have children that, that, and whatnot.
Six, what, eight something?
Yes, till eight. Eight, eight thirty?
Six is better.
Six is better? Okay. So can we stay six to nine tentatively, and if we're finished early, we'll both have leftovers? So I'll sort of delay the sign up for the hot locks. All right. Any other board member announcements? We're hearing none, we've reached the second opportunity for public participation. If you wish to speak to the board, address the board at the same parameters, pull through, please approach podium and speak directly to the microphone or light beam if you want. Anyone who would like to approach the board, address the board.
Again, thank you. I was just thinking, when you were talking about the app, the new Eyewitness New York, which again, I think is great and wonderful, I thought it up in my mind, we do have a policy with students not allowed to have phones during school, and if something is happening during school day, how they can then appropriately access that if they are not on their Chromebooks or anything else. So might be a question that does come back from parents to come up with a idea about.
It might, and I would still say the old fashioned way, like approaching a trusted adult is always good.
Absolutely, absolutely. I still, I genuinely have a lot of concerns about the fact that these kids for a day and a half didn't say anything. It's very concerning that our kids are so desensitized at this time to school violence, but I really do appreciate the efforts that are being put forth, we really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board? Anybody? Okay, we do have our request for second executive session, we don't anticipate any action coming out of executive session other than to adjourn the meeting, but you're welcome to stay, there's lots of cake.
So we're going to have, we're going to have a retreat next Wednesday?
We are.
Board of Education?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I can withhold my issues for the second.
Is there anyone who objects to Mr.? Okay, and with that, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Okay, wonderful. I will be in touch when next Wednesday.